So the public meeting for order.
She added some of each kind, but it was a higher amount.
So do we know if these are just individual donations? Okay, let's get a motion on the table first. We'll entertain a motion that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of February 5th, the high school field trips, and miscellaneous donations and personal items.
So moved.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, a motion made by Richards, seconded by Bell. Is there any discussion? Okay, so we have in our packets an updated total amount for donations that were made. These are individual donations.
You didn't read the character.
Hmm?
You didn't read the character.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda?
If there is, you have to look at other consent agenda.
No discussion. Okay, I think no discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, consent agenda processed. I'm going to read the character. As citizens of our community, we will conduct ourselves in accordance with Newtown's core character attributes as displayed in our Character 3. We'll be responsible for our actions and shall respect one another. We will interact peacefully, productively, and politely. We'll be trustworthy and honest and show compassion toward others. Newtown's continued success is contingent to honor our ability to preserve, to follow through with our commitments, and to stay focused on the greater good. So the next item on our agenda is public participation. And as I bring up those in the public participation, we will move forward to correspondence.
We have a total of fifty emails, sixteen for security, seventeen about the course, Newtown's social course, three for support of the current budget as we pass it, and then nine miscellaneous cost regulations.
Okay. For this go on? Yeah, okay. For the chair report, I did receive an invitation for a what I'm looking for. A the event that's going on the twenty seventh, twenty eighth.
The Unity, what's it called? Looks like Paul Catholic.
It's a forum.
Forum.
Forum, yeah, from that the United Way is sponsoring.
Symposium, yes.
Yes, Symposium at Weston. And I will be forwarding the board information about those invitations for everybody to attend. There are daytime events and evening events. And there are many guest speakers coming from other districts that have experienced similar tragedies in town. So it would be a good opportunity for the board to go and hear people who have gone through this before. Also, I want to remind the board that Thursday there is a public hearing that the Board of Finance is having with regard to the budget. So that's on Thursday. Okay. Janice, superintendent's report.
All right, no written report tonight, but I do want to update you currently how things stand with the SERF grant. I had a length of conversation with Melissa Burrows, who is our UCLA colleague who's working on this piece of it and finishing up. I will be meeting with her on Friday. We gave her some additional, we had a conference call this morning, gave her some additional information. And every time we talk, it seems like there's more things come up that we need the numbers on. I'm optimistic when I meet with her on Friday that we should be kind of at the closing point. She will be out here from California next week. And hopefully at that point, we'll be ready to mail it off. So that's the update.
Is it possible for the board to see that before it goes off?
I don't see why not, but I don't have it.
Okay, right, right. When it's finished, I think. Just so we're informed and in the know with what's going on. Okay, any questions?
In February, we had a discussion about an additional personnel for the central office and for Chalk Hill. Are those in the SERF grant?
The Chalk Hill one is in the SERF grant. The additional one for the what we put in the SERF grant for central office is like a logistics person to handle all the stuff coming in. It's a little different. And also a coordinator for mental health services.
Good, yeah, that's good. All right, any other questions? Yeah.
Just going back to the chair report. I believe you got a letter from the executive director from CAPS that I don't think's been forwarded to the board. Did we see a copy of that?
Sure, I think it's been actually publicly published.
I haven't seen it. I've just seen comments from it. I haven't seen a whole lot.
Janice, in the SERF grant, is there anything that was
Hold on, John, can you wait?
Is there anything in the SERF grant that was removed?
Not at the No, I don't believe so. I think there were some things that we determined as we discussed them that we couldn't make a good rationale for, but nothing that we originally put in there has been removed.
So the guidance counselors are still in there?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes, that's a big part of it.
Thank you.
Just, we have to show that everything that's in there is part of recovery. And certainly those are very explainable.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay. I will entertain a motion that the Board of Education approve the financial report for the month ending January 30th, 2013.
So moved.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Keith, seconded by Bill. Martin, do you want to walk us through this?
This is the, this is the seventh monthly report for the current fiscal year. Four major object classifications have changed from the prior month. During the month of January, we spent $6.7 million. 3.3 million for salaries, 2.1 for benefits. We made our third quarterly payment for the medical benefits fund, which was $2 million. That was deposited in January. And then 1.3 million was spent on all other necessary expenses. Transportation and tuition count for about $580,000 of the 1.3 million. All major object accounts remain in a positive balance for this month. And the sub-account balances are positive, except for those that I've been highlighting over the months. The EAs, the special education service salaries, and the tuition, which are all expected to be somewhat reduced in their need when the excess cost grant comes in. Couple that have been added to this last month were the oil and the extra work non-certified for the help at setting up the Chalk Hill School. Administrative salaries has joined that group this month because we have the salary of the assistant vice-principal or the vice-principal that has been added to the Sandy Hook category. And we also had, there's a big potential negative showing up in the other in the purchased services, purchased property services, which relates to the generator that we received approval on at the last board meeting. In addition to that, there was a deductible payment that we needed to make to our insurance company for an outstanding suit that is against us, where we pay the first $25,000. And as the insurance company's attorney, time is being used, we get billed for that. So that puts the insurance account in the hole by about 3,000, as mentioned in the narrative here. And that's about it at this point. We had a meeting with the insurance company this past week, go over the restoration process for Sandy Hook School. The way they work it is they determine the scope of repairs that are necessary to restore the facility. And then they will determine a timeframe for when such restoration can actually take place, and that becomes what they call a period of recovery. And all the expenses that are associated with excess expenses that are associated with the Chalk Hill move shouldn't be reimbursed up until that period of recovery is reached. And the reason they do that is, obviously, they don't want you to say that it's going to take you two or three years to recover, and therefore you get excess reimbursement. So we're hoping that we can get that to at least the end of the fiscal year. But I'll hear more once he costs out some of the expenses. The majority of the expensive items seem to be doors that need to be replaced that were built into by the police. And there is minimal damage in the three classrooms. So it's not going to be, it's not going to be seven figures by any means.
Ron.
Yeah.
Are they, are they taking into account that there's a possibility that we may never go back to that school?
Yes, yes. The way the insurance works is we have insured all of our facilities for losses that would be sustained. And we're owed whatever the damages are, whether we use the facility, return to the facility or not, because we have had coverage for that property. There are three classrooms of furniture that were also need to be replaced. So they would give us reimbursement on everything that we were insured for, regardless of whether the school was reopened or not.
Does this have a question?
Yeah, Ron, can you go over again the, what you were talking about in regards to professional services? I know the school were over on that by about $90,000.
Okay. Yeah, there hasn't been much change in the professional services this month as compared to last month. In professional services, we need to monitor this very closely. This includes the legal fees for both the superintendent's office, which is the district required expenses, and the special education expenses. It also includes a number of other accounts, such as engineering services for Geno's area. It includes medical evaluations, speech evaluations. And just give me a second, I'll get the detail that is included here. We got special ed, occupational and physical therapy. The transitional services are here. We talked about that earlier in the year. That's currently showing a deficit of about $27,000. Some of that may be reimbursed by excess cost grant. I'm not sure how much. And then we also have the reports out of order here. Okay, substance abuse, which is a district-wide expense. Psychological and medical evaluations, that has a budget of about $69,000. We're not fully expended, but it seems historically we always end up spending that amount. The health is the biggest part of it. The health for the special ed contracted nursing services, we're about $83,000 in the hole as we speak in that particular account. So that's really the bulk of what it is. And if that was an unbudgeted item, we did transfer earlier $79,000 into that account. And these were the nursing services that were required for students through their IEPs that needed to be honored. It was planned that we would have or thought we could handle those with the existing nurses that were hired, but the IEP wouldn't allow that. So that, I think that was done, or we were informed of that back in September or October.
So you said, so the biggest part of that was the $90,000 overages coming from the health items?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, sensing no further discussion. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed, you may ask. The next item on our agenda is the discussion and approval of the January 23rd minutes. We postpone these? Table, please?
Let's postpone.
Let's postpone, because there was some discussion about the additional added minutes for the, what was thought to be an executive session. My understanding is that Mr. Hart has some additional wording. I would like to remove these from the agenda to allow board members the opportunity to look over this, these additional minutes, and we can vote on them at the next meeting.
I can just, I can just do the math.
So we will postpone these until the next meeting since we don't have a motion table. Okay. The next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes for February 14th. So we'll entertain a motion that the Board of Education approves the minutes of February 14th, 2013. A motion made by John. You need a second from Cody.
Second.
You need a second. I'm always not here, but we do have a majority of those members who are here to vote on those minutes. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any extensions? Okay, so the extensions are Keith, Bill, and Richard. Okay. Okay, the next item on our agenda is discussion of possible action of the 2013-2014 calendar. So we'll entertain a motion that the Board of Education adopt the 2013-14 school calendar as presented. Okay, a motion made by Bill, seconded by Richard. All right, so Janice, do you want to walk us through the calendar?
Yes, I'm going to walk you through the calendar, and then I'm going to tell you what our conundrum is for this next year. We have, starting on the 22nd with the teachers' reporting, by using those early three days as staff days, 22nd, 23rd, and 26th, the staff development days. And as you recall, there is one day that can be used by the teachers as a non-directed day. Students would report them on the 27th. Once again, we are removing the, we have successfully removed the Bethel's Day in November. That's been a very successful move with the celebrations that go on in each of the schools. We'll come back after the December break on January 2nd, which gives us a Thursday and a Friday. Moving the early release date to the 17th, because there's that makes it a four-day weekend for students in January. February has the two days, as we have this year, for the February break. It's the 17th and 18th of February. And then you'll notice the, and here's our conundrum here, is April. The April break on this calendar coincides with our neighbors Bethel and Brookfield. It does not, however, coincide with Danbury. Danbury's is the following week. That is problematic for us, because we have the Magnet School that we bused to, and we also have Henry Abbott Tech. However, I chose to keep it the same as Brookfield and Bethel for the presentation tonight, because if we move it into the next week, that is the week of our referendum. And people would be gone. So we'll have to work out something with busing, but I just want you to be aware that this does not coincide with Danbury. And they have already adopted their calendar.
So How many kids would be affected?
Forty at the Magnet School, and Henry Abbott has about that same number, don't they?
I don't know if they have quite that many, week sixteen or twenty, something like that.
At least twenty, but
Okay, and perhaps we can negotiate with them not to have exams on that week, or?
Yeah, exactly. You know, our spoke and wheel system of busing is where it becomes the problem. So we'll have to see what we can do in terms of we've got a year to work on it, so we'll see what we can do to iron that out. But I do think it would be a mistake to move it to coincide with Danbury. Then this would show us being done on the 16th. And if you remember, this year we had done the five built-in emergency closings were, are built-in, so I did the same thing for this one. So if there were no snow days whatsoever, we would actually be able to get out five days earlier.
I noticed, it may just be a typo, I noticed that in the little box in the June, it has a caption for projected last year's school without emergency closing, but there's no mark up on the calendar to show that day.
It's the night.
It's the night.
The night? Oh. Yeah. Okay.
You didn't get this, you didn't get the symbol on your
Yeah, I want to pick a less obscure character.
Get another character. The in the arbitration, the award on the conference days went to the NFT. So according to that, we need to have the principals and the schools work out when they're going to have their conference days. We had tried to have them within the same week on our proposal, but we didn't win that proposal. So you'll notice there are no conference days listed yet, although we did put down some open house dates. What I did also is I did a 14-15 calendar. Not that you need to vote on that right away, but I thought it would be a good idea to start getting in the habit of doing two years out. Certainly helps people in their planning if we do that. And just as a reminder, we have 183 days for students, 187 days for teachers.
For the 14-15 calendar, does that April week coincide with Danbury, or?
Danbury hasn't done theirs yet. So I'm, we're talking to them about that. But we would have the same problem again if we made it a week later.
I understand.
Yeah.
We talked previously about moving towards the regional calendar. And I thought what you had said, that actually 14-15 was the year that directly we would all match calendars.
Well, that's what we've been striving for, is to match by that time. I was hopeful that we would be able to match for 13-14, but there's that one glitch.
So that's never going to be a hardened fast thing? The idea behind it is just try to match.
Try to.
And so far, everybody's online except Danbury, who has some reason that they prefer Danbury.
Right, and it's been approved already, so it's moving forward. But 14-15 is hopeful though, since it hasn't been approved yet.
Any idea why they're not doing it?
Do not know.
So, yeah.
Can I mention something? I'm sorry, I just, I happened, I happened to talk to a girl in Danbury, and I told her they hadn't formed an idea of calendar for 14-15 yet. And she was, she does the calendar, so she was going to kind of try to coincide with us. And that's in Brookfield, because of our issues. So that's something that she's going to bring to their board.
I gave the superintendent copies of our projected 13-14, but I hadn't given them 14-15s.
Quick question. You said we're on the same schedule as Bethel, and
And Brookfield.
Brookfield, that's what I thought. So, I'm going to spill it. So they obviously probably have students that go to Abbott Tech as well, right? So I mean, do we know how they're dealing with this problem? Because maybe they have a solution that we haven't thought of.
Yeah, we will definitely be talking about that and see what they use. We might even be able to share some busing, since we have the same busing company as Brookfield.
That'd be great.
Yeah. It's within our town, the spoken wheel system is the problem. We can get them from, see, they come in on all the buses to Reed for the Magnet School, and then they go from Reed on one bus. And the one day we had, that we had to bus when we were in session, parents brought them to Reed, because we didn't have the spoke part, and then they went directly from Reed into the Magnet School. It's that, it's just like that hub that the airlines use. It's those feeders coming in that are the problematic within our town. So, and the same thing for the Henry Abbott. They ride the first-tier buses, and they come into one place, and then they take one bus over. Two buses, one bus over. So we'll work on it. We'll find a solution.
CMTs are now early dismissal days. Correct?
Right.
But they do occur in the two weeks in March. I'm going to assume it would be the week of the 10th and the week of the 17th?
Yes, except that we may, we may have the writing prompt earlier. Don't they do the writing prompt around the 5th?
First Tuesday in March, so it's
So it'll be the 4th.
So the 4th would be the writing prompt, and then we would have the rest of the testing the week of the 10th and the week of the 17th.
With makeups, then?
We would also have testing the week of the 3rd. I mean, we start, everybody has to administer the writing prompt on the same day in the state. But, and usually we continue to test, that's sort of the beginning.
So we would have testing the week of the 3rd and the week of the 10th, not the week of the 17th?
Well, there's makeup testing, usually we take up four weeks.
Okay. And then the, if it's, if history stays true, then the conferences would be the last week of March, or would they be the first week of April?
April.
So there would be the first week of April, then we would have a four-day week, four and a half-day week, and then the week off for April break.
Mm-huh.
So we would have half-days for three of those days?
So they're usually at the end.
Well, I'm, that's what I'm asking. Are they at the end of March, or are they the first week of April?
We don't have them in March.
It's the end of, I think it's the end of March.
We've always had them at the end of March.
Remember we were talking about the dates, trying to switch the dates, the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth?
Yeah, I think they're gonna have... Yeah, I don't have it either.
Well, I have, I have the draft.
You have the issues.
So I have conferences the last week of March.
I don't see how that could work on this calendar.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking. So, and do we have, have the principals discussed when the conferences would be so that we could see how this, because it's difficult to adopt a calendar when you don't know when the conference days are, because those are a week of half-days, and those, I think, also can affect the flow, and we want to make sure that things are properly aligned with regard to those half-days. So I'm reluctant to vote on the calendar not knowing when the conference days will be.
No, the principals, um, have not yet had the discussion or set those up, so, but that's now what we have to do, it has to go through the principals. It, the way this calendar lines up, it would not be practical to have those conference days the end of March, it would need to be that first week of April, just, just, just because of what, where they're lined up. So, um, my guess is that's where they'll fall in. But, um, in the, in the, in the past, going back several years ago, the calendar was adopted without the conference days in, and then they were added later, once the, um, once all the principals had settled that with their, their union and their staff.
Right, and, um, the last couple of years we've looked at it with the conference days because we've found that in doing it the previous way that we ran into some trouble with regard to, um, how many early release days we would have all in one area, and that it caused some difficulty with continuity for students. Is there any other discussion?
You have, um, seven days in here that are off PLC day?
Right.
And, I'm sorry, but how many do you think that you have in this year? Six?
I think we end up with, I thought we had seven.
Seven.
Because I seem to remember losing one somewhere.
We did, we lost one this year. Did, was it, this year we lost, we had fewer?
Let me just check the, I'll, I'll double check on that.
All right, thanks. Because, uh, if, if we had previously been shooting for eight, and we now only have seven...
We're down.
Is that, other than being down on PLC time, is there anything else? Is there a union contract related to this?
No, there's nothing around the contract.
Because this isn't contract stuff, this is us getting time outside of the contract term. Within the contract, better word.
Too small.
I can't, I can't see it.
Hi, just a, a quick question, what's the likelihood that the principals will be able to meet with the teachers before our next meeting for, for this next year's calendar discussion of conferences?
Certainly has put it out for them to have that discussion and come to a consensus. Usually what happens then is then I need to bring the principals together, and, so it's usually their meeting, then I'm meeting, and sometimes some one or two of them has to go back. So we'll try, we'll work on that, we'll make that a goal.
All right, so how do people feel about postponing this until we know when conference days are before we adopt a calendar?
I don't know if we can wait forever, but it certainly has to be, probably two weeks.
Okay.
Can we prove the exception of conference days, just to give people an idea of holidays and vacations?
I think that I would prefer to wait. Um, I think that this gives people a general idea of what we're looking at, but I think I would prefer to wait to take any action until we have the whole picture.
Okay. The Bethel and Brookfield schools all go to contribute to the Magnet School. Is there any way of us, like, putting a little pressure on Sal to change the week? They can un-adopt. Well, I don't understand if, the three districts are dependent on that, why they would, why they would not at least call you up and say something like, "I'm terribly sorry, but we have to do this." It's like, we just now have to realign themselves. There must be a reason.
Yeah, I don't know what that reason is.
The reason is because they have the school, they're district.
Well, I guess, I guess.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table that we need to table.
Well, we can postpone or we can withdraw it.
So I think withdrawing the motion would be the best option.
I, I think I made the motion, so I will withdraw my motion if the second will withdraw it.
Withdrawn.
Okay, so we have a withdrawn motion. Okay, and I'm not going to even go venture towards the fourteen-fifteen calendar, that's all right? We got the rest of the session all at the same time.
So...
All right, so we have a first read of, oh, sorry, what? Go into the paper. So we have a first read, I'm going to focus, of the, um, of a revision for, um, policy seven dash four oh one for student discipline suspension and expulsion procedures regarding use of hearing officers for expulsions. Um, this does not require a motion as it is a first read. Janice, do you want to tell us about where the changes took place? I believe you talked to counsel with regard to this.
I'm just trying to find the... Page six, yeah, there it is, okay. Um, it's on page six, number three. Here is our, our, our problem. When a student is recommended for expulsion, there's usually a time limit that needs to be done within ten days. Particularly in budget season, um, getting board members for an expulsion is, has been difficult. So we would like to have students option to have a hearing officer do the expulsion in the event that we cannot get enough board members who are available for that. So after talking to our council, um, they said that according to our policy, we weren't really able to do a hearing officer, and suggested this sentence be added to number three. Ultimately, alternatively, the board may appoint a partial hearing officer to hear and decide the expulsion matter, provided that no member of the board may serve on such panel. And that would label us on those times when, um, we can't get board members together within the ten days, um, that we could, uh, have a hearing officer do the expulsion.
Discussion.
Where, where do we get the hearing officers?
Um, the hearing officers, there are several in the state that are attorneys that do this work, and we would, we would have probably two of them that would be on, on call for us.
I am familiar with the, the entry of law, I didn't realize that we could have this in our policy.
These are actually a lot of times retired attorneys, is that correct? Yes.
Um, the way that it's currently written, if we could get one or two, then we can't use this alternative. So I think the wording should be changed to, provided that three members of the board are not available to serve on such panel.
Is that...
Three or more.
Take it back.
Let's take it back.
It says no member.
No member, yes.
I agree with Richard.
No, see, you can't be, no member of the board can be on...
It just sounds like if you have one or two, then...
Yeah, if I have two, then I can't use a hearing officer.
So what was your rewording? Provided that...
Provided that, that three members of the board are not available...
Do we only need three, or do we need a majority of four?
You need three.
You need three, but then you have to have a unanimous decision.
Yeah.
The three or more members of the board are not available to serve on the panel.
By that three or more.
And they'll get paid the same as the hearing officer.
Actually, I read that as meaning that the board, that the board member couldn't be the hearing officer.
Couldn't.
That's, that's what I read it as, too.
Yeah, I mean, that's, because that's, I mean, that's, I think that's part of the statute around hearing officers.
Yeah.
Pack of that, I'll go with that, after, clear.
Yeah.
Is that Michelle?
That's Michelle.
Yeah, ask her to clarify that.
I thought, yeah, I thought it was saying that if, if you can't do a board panel, then no board member can be on...
Right.
...with the hearing officer.
But...
It doesn't sound that way, does it?
But it says panel, and a single hearing officer, doesn't sound like a panel.
Yeah.
If we would have only one hearing officer involved.
The, the antecedent of such panel is not clear.
Yeah. So let's go back to Michelle.
So that's what a first reading is all about.
All right, so we'll go back, uh, with that suggested change, and we'll see what comes back to us at our next meeting. Okay. Last item on our agenda is public participation. And I see a no, so sensing no public participation, and...
Wait. Sorry. One quick, uh, board-related, but not otherwise listed thing. Can I get an addition for a quick conversation on the Communications Subcommittee?
It says, do you want this during the board meeting?
You want it right now?
Yeah, it's real quick.
That's part of the agenda.
After the agenda.
So you need to add, you need to make a motion to add to the agenda?
To add to the agenda, a, a discussion of the...
Regarding?
Regarding the Communications Subcommittee.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Keith, seconded by Richard, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we have that item added to our agenda in the nick of time.
Well, I didn't have a second.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. Very quickly, uh, we had discussed, uh, communicating with public, uh, through a newsletter sort of event for, uh, the, from the Communications Subcommittee, and worked a little bit with the Laura, and we got a very limited draft to the point where it didn't print off correctly. I just wanted everybody to see the format, and we're also going to pass it through to you, who were the other member of the Subcommittee before it's out, but it does need to get out to, particularly the PTAs are looking for it this week.
Yeah.
So I wanted a chance to make sure that the board had a glance at what it is. Content, I believe, was supposed to be within the Subcommittee anyway, so I didn't think there was any problem with that. But I wanted everybody to be understanding of what we're doing and when we're trying to do it by, which is two days from now.
Okay.
And so, uh...
So we don't need any motion to approve anything?
There's no motion to approve anything. I just wanted everybody to remember what we did agree to.
And do we have a copy of this?
Uh, I, I will send out an electronic copy, but I just brought a physical print for people to quick glance at.
Great, okay, so we better take the opportunity to do that after our...
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then a motion to...
Second.
Motion made by Keith, seconded by Bill, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.